Good afternoon and welcome to the August 20th meeting of the Meredith City Council is called to order. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on closed session items only?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed session agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As listed on the agenda, the City Council will meet on four items. CS1, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92. There is significant exposure to litigation in three cases. CS2, conference with legal counsel existing litigation. City Council will conduct closed session with the city manager, Assistant City Manager, the Administrative Services Director, and the city attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.95B to consider the following workers' compensation claims. Schmader versus City of Marietta, WCAB case number ADJ14691465, ADJ14937668. City Council will also conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 with the city manager, city attorney, and city negotiators regarding labor negotiations with the Marietta Generals Employees Association, Marietta Supervisors Association, and Management and Confidential. Finally, the City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B to continue the process for future appointment of an employee to the position of city manager. That concludes closed session. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we're going to go into recess into closed session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM for a regular meeting. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 20th regular meeting of the Meredith City Council is now called to order. Madam City Attorney, please provide a report from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council met in closed session on a total of six items. The first three were legal counsel with, I'm sorry, a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. On those three items, the City Council was updated, no reportable action. The second item was regarding existing litigation in the matter of Schmader versus City of Marietta. Again, the council was updated, no reportable action. The fourth item was to confer with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding labor negotiations with three different groups. Again, the council was updated, no reportable action. The final item was regarding a public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B regarding the appointment of an employee to the position of city manager. Again, the council was updated, no reportable action.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the pledge allegiance led by MPT Warren. Remain standing for the invocation led by Pastor Roger Bowman from Gateway Church of the Nazarene. Please remove your hats, put your hands over your heart, and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm privileged at age 93 to be able to stand here and offer a moment of prayer. Those four words over there in God we trust is the reason why we pray. Let's pray. Our God in whom we live and move and have our being, we look to you, the author and finisher of our faith. We thank you for the privilege we have of coming to you because in you there is hope, there is liberty, there is peace, there is direction. We worship you today because Jesus is the reason for living. I pray your blessing upon our city council, our mayor, elected and appointed leaders. I pray for all in the city of Marietta. I pray for these tonight who lead us. Would you grant our leaders divine wisdom and insight as they direct our wonderful city? We pray that you might be lifted up, and may we be protected by the almighty hand of God who has brought us this far by faith. Thank you, Lord. We love you, and thank you for life every day. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Bowman, and God bless you.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? I've got to figure out how to do this now.
Seeing none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Move to a motion, excuse me, yeah, call for a motion and second for the approval of the agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember DeForest and a second by Councilmember Holliday. Please vote. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to city manager administrative update. The city manager administrative update is the opportunity for the city manager to provide community updates as well as department or commission announcement on current or upcoming projects. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a presentation that's going to be given jointly by Police Chief Conrad and Fire Chief Malloy on the recent fire that we had in the city.
Good evening, Mayor Stone and council. I'm actually going to bring Captain Henry up with me because we had some time beforehand where we were able to discuss some of the ways that we work together. This evening, we want to present to you a brief oversight of some of the work that your firefighters and your police department did two weekends ago when we were tested by multiple disasters in the city. And we want to show you what our agencies are capable of doing when we're faced with those disasters. So if everyone remembers about two weekends ago on a Friday afternoon, if you looked that way, you saw a lot of smoke in the air. And that smoke was in the air because we had the Alamos fire started in our city. The Alamos fire started on a Friday afternoon. It was August 2nd. It was a little bit over 100 degrees. We had a strong onshore wind, and we had a fire start in an area that had an undisturbed fuel bed in front of it. What we call that in the fire service is alignment, and it's not a good thing. It's when you have a fire that has the ability to grow quickly, and it's going to be difficult to stop. So we had a fire in alignment, and we knew immediately that we would have to evacuate a lot of residences, and we had to get ahead of this fire. So we brought our response, and then we brought in our cooperators as well. This area is in what's known as a wildland protection agreement area. The city of Marietta has agreements with CAL FIRE and Riverside County Fire. Then when we have fires in certain areas, we can utilize their resources in addition to our resources. And this was in one of those areas. We can bring ground suppression. What CAL FIRE can bring is air suppression to a fire like this. So we had a rapid-spreading fire. We knew that we would need to evacuate people, and we would also have to bring our EOC online because we weren't sure right when the fire was starting how big it would get and what sort of impacts it would have to the city. So we also activated the EOC, which was all of our city staff that came together so they could be a single point of contact. That single point of contact for those of us out there running the incident and the fire is very important because we need to be able to communicate with the public, with other cooperators, and we can't do that with every single one of them. So we utilize our EOC to do that, to do the messaging and the public outreach. So this fire started, and within about an hour, it had grown to 72 anchors, and we immediately brought in aircraft, which was very helpful to our fire suppression efforts. So I want to show you a little video. And because we have this agreement with CAL FIRE, we have access to their aircraft. When they got overhead, they knew immediately that they needed big aircraft. So we brought in a large aerial tanker. This is a jet. It's out of San Bernardino. What you're going to see in this video, it's very short, is them putting retardant on the fire. By the time I got this, it almost looks like the fire is out. That's because the fire is already gone from where it started. It had grown away. And the aircraft came in, and they put lines down the active flank, which was on the east side of this fire. I didn't have my phone out at that point, but I did get my phone out to take a little video of what it looks like when they're doing this drop. So you can see there, we did this drop, and that goes on the edge of the fire. It keeps the fire from spreading, and it allows our crews time to get hose lines in place and suppress the fire with water. And then the next thing we have here, if you remember about two years ago, you called me up here and said, "Marietta PD is starting a drone program. Does fire support that?" And I said, "Absolutely, I support that." And this is exactly what I visioned. We have been able to work with Marietta PD to do great things with the drone program. We didn't have the drone up while the aircraft drops were coming in. You have to keep the drones out of the way. But previously, when we have a fire like this, the perimeter of this fire was about two miles around. It was 11,000 feet around the fire. We have to have somebody in every part of that fire looking for hotspots. Utilizing Marietta PD's drones, we're able to fly the entire fire and tell us exactly where the hotspots are. So what you see now, you're going to see is an eight-minute-long video that I sped up eight times. I almost had to call Jace to ask how to do that, but I figured it out. So it's sped up, so it's the drone footage going around the perimeter of this fire. If you look off to the right side, you see a cluster of homes. That's where we were trying to keep it out of. And as we go around, you'll see that it goes into the new construction site off Clinton Keith. That's important to notice because we were using that cleared area as an area to stop the fire that we were steering the fire to because when fires don't have fuel, they run out of potential to spread. So I'm going to narrate as we go around. It's sped up, so it's a little squiggly. This is right after the fire burned out, and we did all suppression efforts. You can actually see firefighters on both of the flanks. At one point, we had 250 firefighters assigned to this fire. That was our personnel. It was CAL FIRE and some other cooperating agencies. We had hand crews. We have bulldozers over here working up the side. What we're able to do with the drone is find these hotspots that are still active, and we have to go in and put out. And you can look, those little tiny ants, those are firefighters. They're going in, putting them out. You see a whole bunch right here.
Yeah.
And so this is the perimeter of the fire. That's the city yard. And you can just see the intensity that this fire burned with. When we drive through there, it's a bed of ash. Everything in there burned out. That's the intensity that this fire burned with, and that's how quickly it burned. High school's up there, construction site. So you see this fire is smoking, and it continued to smoke for days. We had crews on scene for several days putting out hotspots on this fire. And there's one still burning. Now we're coming in for a landing. This is Sergeant Elliott flying the drone. Let's see how good he does. Perfect, landed it. So Captain Henry is going to give us a little information on PD's drone program.
Like I said, a couple of years ago, we talked about the drone program. And when we first brought it up, we thought of crime fighting, law enforcement purposes. And then once you start talking to other people, you see the collaboration that you could have with other agencies. And this is as good of an example as you can show with collaboration with the fire department. Earlier in the year, we had where somebody was setting fires, and our drone was able to get above, and we captured somebody that was lighting the fires. This was more of, how can we assist you in pointing you in the right direction? And we just, we have our officer with command and control of the fire department, and we'll follow directions. Wherever you want us to go, we'll fly our drones and give you the information that you need. The PD currently has six operators that are drone certified through the FAA. Those drones can be launched at any time. They can respond from home, or if they're on duty, they can respond immediately for use. So this, we could theoretically have a drone up in the air within eight to 10 minutes from when we see smoke. In the future, if we advance our drone program to the drone first responder, we could actually launch a drone as soon as a 911 call comes in. So within minutes, two, three minutes, we could have a drone overhead providing real-time feedback to the PD and the fire department.
So if you remember during the state of the city, we talked about some of the innovative approaches we were bringing to public safety in Marietta. And one of those things was Genesis, which is an evacuation software. This was our first opportunity to use Genesis, and though we never want to have to use it, we're glad it's in place. If you look up on the map, this is actually a view of my command screen for the software that we use to run incidents like this. Anything in red are the zones that we evacuated. And you'll notice one says MUR, and the ones above it say RVC. That's because this was on the border of the city. This is in the top-right corner of the city. So we actually evacuated county areas as well for this fire. So we were working with RSO on their evacuations as well. These evacuations go live. Once we push them out with our partners at County EMD, they go live, and they issue reverse 911s to the people that are in there. We back those reverse 911s up with Marietta PD going door-to-door on the houses that they can to evacuate. And then on the right, for all of us that were at the scene of the fire, this is a wireless alert that comes through and pushes through on any phone that's connected to a cell tower that's touching one of those evacuated sites. So on the right is what popped up as far as the evacuation notice on our phone. So this was our first opportunity to use it. It worked great, and it will only get better as we have more experience and practice using this software. Eventually, it will say like where all of the road closures are, where you need to evacuate, to what points have we put for evacuation shelters. That will all come as we develop this system out further. So we thought we had had our fire for the year, and we were still assigned to the Alamos fire. We had resources there. Our firefighters that are in the back of the room didn't sleep that night. They stayed out there. It was the first of their two-day shift, and people were still out there working the next day. And then at 2:00 the following day, same conditions. It was over 100 degrees. The wind was coming strong out of the west. We had another fire start. This fire, we called it the Keith Fire. It was because it was reported at Clinton Keith Road, so we just named it that. But it was northbound interstate 215, just north of Los Alamos Road, right as the on-ramp to the freeway starts. This fire started and was moving very quickly through the dry vegetation there and was immediately impacting homes. As we pulled on scene, we were all still on the other fire, so we were there very rapidly. And we had other resources that were available that responded. So as we pulled on scene, we had a fire that was about an acre, spreading quickly and bumping structures immediately. All of the houses along the 215 that are protected by an acoustic and a fire prevention wall that runs along the side of the freeway were taking on heat and flame immediately. So I want to show you, this is our engine four that was in there on the firefighter. Somebody back there was on that fire. Somebody's up there. So we pulled into the cul-de-sac. All of these houses were being impacted by fire, and our firefighters set up on top of the engine so they could maintain multiple houses at one time off the deck gun, and we have a lot of water and opportunities. So this is just a video of what that looked like and how smoky it is when these fires are coming in. And you could see they're controlling the fire that's behind the homes and keeping that fire off of the homes in this cul-de-sac. My truck still stinks, by the way. Still smells like smoke. So they did a great, fantastic job. We had this fire immediately impacting almost eight homes. PD was in there evacuating the homes as we were working with bringing fire engines in to protect these. And in the end, we had eight homes impacted by fire, but not a single one of them burned down, not a single one of them actually had damage by the fire. Our Fire Prevention Bureau came out and did a full damage inspection on all of the streets along there, and we've logged every bit of damage that there was. Some fences burned, some vegetation burned, some stuff in the backyards burned, but none of the structures actually received any hard damage from these fires, just a testament to the good work that our firefighters and PD put in on that. We did activate the EOC briefly again for this because we weren't sure how much aid residents in these homes would need for that. You know, when the fire starts, you don't know how the fire is going to end. But fortunately, we got ahead of this fire pretty quickly. We only used Marietta resources on this, and this was the first large-scale fire that we've had where Marietta PD and Marietta Fire shared a radio system, and we could communicate with each other because of the change to the PSEC radio that we have made. So we, this was our first opportunity to do that. We have some work to do to figure out how we're going to manage our incidents together with that, but it was a great value add for both of our resources that we could communicate that way. And this is just a quick drive. I sped it up. I wasn't driving this fast. Of where you can see the fire. A point I want to draw is where you saw our firefighters was on the other side of this wall that you're looking at right now in that cul-de-sac. This is what was being hit by fire. That wall is a fire prevention measure that saved those houses. So where we can't have setbacks, we put in the masonry walls, and that really does a good job of holding off the fire. And if, as we drive by, you can still see some work being done. You can see firefighters spraying from the other side, working on some of that vegetation on that side, and the overhaul and mop-up that's going along here. And I can't pause it, but you'll see where this fire ends. Chief Ramos, who was the incident commander, told our engine company, "Go to the front of the fire and cut it off." And what that means to us is keep that fire out of this next hill we see. So our engine company was very, did a great job, went to the head of the fire and stopped it there because if it got past here, it would have got up into those hills, and we would have had a much bigger, more complex incident that we were able to prevent. So do you want to talk about evacuations? Captain Henry is now going to talk about some of the evacuations for this neighborhood. It was a dense neighborhood, so that was a little more complicated to evacuate.
Yes, kind of provide this, the personnel at the police department used during these fires, for both of them, actually. For the Alamos fire, we dedicated over 30 police officers that were assigned to a array of duties of road closures, evacuations, and helping with command and control of the incident. We had nine dispatchers working, four professional staff who were pulled from their normal daily duties that were brought into the EOC to help perform whatever was needed, and then assisted with social media. We were able to get a pretty good reach to our citizens with our social media about road closures and where to go and not go. During this fire, we evacuated a total of 25 homes on five different streets. The very next day, for the Keith Fire, we had over 20 officers dedicated to the incident, again with nine dispatchers and additional professional staff. This day, we evacuated 32 homes over a six-street area for that neighborhood.
And this fire, we had under control in under an hour, but those homes were impacted immediately. So that adds a lot of complexity to the incident when we have a residence being impacted by the fire as soon as we get there. So really, what we want to talk about, and this is the outline of the Alamos fire, so you can kind of see where it lined up in the city. But I think we need to really focus on the success that these incidents were for our cities and to show you that one of the city council's goals is innovative public safety, and we feel like our fire department and our police department are delivering in that regard. We had two very low-frequency, high-complexity incidents back-to-back, and they were both managed fantastically well. What I'm really happy about, though, we had zero civilian injuries. We had zero structures lost due to these two major fires, and we had zero firefighter or PD injuries. Those are statistics I will take any time on any fire. So just, it shows the tremendous amount of training and effort that all of our crews put in, that our city crews put in in the EOC. Our dispatchers had hundreds of phone calls of people reporting this, and they were able to keep dispatching the other incidents that were going on in our growing city. So we just looked at this as a great success and wanted to share it with our city council.
Counsel, if I could also jump in, one add. So we did activate the EOC, and we had a number of employees who gave up their Friday evening to work the EOC, and then some of the staff came back on Saturday. And normally, you know, we're in a windowless room. We never get to see the fire, the smoke, or the airplanes, and we're a little pouty about that. But thanks to the drones, we were able to watch all of that from inside the room. And it not only gave us a lot of insight and information that we needed for the EOC, but made us a little less pouty. So, thank you.
Chief Malloy and Captain Henry, we want to just thank you for your quick, efficient response. It could have been really disastrous with the wind, and so we want to commend you and your entire team. We're just really proud of you. Along with our city manager, Kim Summers, we want to thank you and your entire team for being here over the weekend, and we're just so proud of you. So again, thank you. And if there's any other comments from my colleagues? Yes, sir. Mr. Holliday.
I'm very repetitive when I'm talking to the community, and I describe our public safety, both our police and fire, as second to none. And you guys demonstrated that in both these instances. And a lot of residents are saying, "Well, what about hotspots? Well, what about who's watching it now? Who's watching?" And I say, "There are firefighters around the clock out there." I talked to one of them. I said, "How's it going?" He said, "Well, I wish I could have gone to church today." I said, "And I wish I could get some sleep." And I think he had five hours across two days. So I assured the community that you guys are on the job, and you proved my point that you guys are second to none. And I definitely appreciate you. I want to give you a round of applause.
MPT Warren?
You know, we are truly blessed to have the best fire, PD, dispatchers, staff, and cooperating agencies. This could have been a lot worse. It could have been disastrous on many fronts, and I'm just so darn proud of all of you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for being part of our amazing city and making the great city that it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember DeForest?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just concur with everything that was said up here, but to also elaborate on something that happened during the Keith Fire. During the Keith Fire, my husband had a heart attack, and Marietta Fire and Rescue were there very, very fast. They were absolutely amazing. And this, the, sorry. The quality and the caring that Marietta Fire has for all of the residents, and I've seen it many times, was outstanding. So I would like to say thank you. I know that they showed up in an F-150 truck, and there were three guys, and it wasn't Fire Station 1. And they stayed until the ambulance left. It took me an hour to get to the hospital, but I know, I knew my husband was in an ambulance going there fast. So it was remarkable. And when it rains, it pours, but it didn't stop the service. So that's what was so amazing. So thank you, guys. I appreciate you all. And never do we want to have a medical incident like that during a fire, but I knew we were in good hands, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Thank you. I'll keep it short and say I'm really proud to call you guys friends and thank you for everything you do for the city. We're greatly appreciative.
Thanks much.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes my presentation. It was their presentation, but...
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Moving on to governing body commission, committee, board reports. The governing body reports is an opportunity for a city council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, commission committees, and board meeting attendance. She'll not exceed three minutes. Councilmember DeForest?
Thank you, Mayor. You could read where I attended the special city council priority setting, goal setting, which I thought was very, very productive on all of our parts, and it was wonderful to work together, and attended the special meeting regarding our city manager appointment. I'd also like to thank my council colleagues for filling in for me and going to WRCOG or RCHCA, which all seemed to happen the same week that I was in the hospitals with my husband. So thank you again, colleagues, for being there and representing Marietta. I was very proud. Thank you all.
Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My notes up here. So we've got a lengthy list because we've been off for a couple of meetings. So I attended two code enforcement ad hoc committees, which is still ongoing, working through a lot of stuff that we're going to be bringing back to council, and those meetings are going very well. Also attended the special city council priority setting session, which I've told staff privately, but I want to also tell them publicly, it was the best priority slash goal-setting session we've had since I've been on council. Very productive, very well done. So kudos to them. Had our first Santa Stops organizational meeting, so Santa Stops will be coming back again this year, and we're working out some of the, a few of the kinks that we had. And I know the residents, it was well-received, and I know they're excited about it coming back. So we're going to hopefully make it even better this year. I did attend the Western Riverside Council of Government Southwest Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, or known as WRCOG TUMF. I like to spell it out because not everybody knows what the letters mean. And on behalf of Councilmember DeForest, and it was kind of a cursory meeting because staff had already met with staff from WRCOG and talked about projects that Marietta deemed important. And so all we had to do was show up and vote. But that vote was very important because it brought $9.25 million to the city for killer road interchange. killer road interchange. We're still a little short on that. How much are we short, Madam City Manager? Just a little bit. We're still working on the rest of it, but it's moving forward finally, and that's a good chunk. And that is all I have for my governing body announcements reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. On July the 10th, I attended the Riverside County Transportation Committee, also known as RCTC. The commission voted unanimously to not seek voters' approval for a new transportation sales tax measure in the November 2024 general election, so it will not be on your ballot. I also attended the Marietta Special City Council Goal Setting Workshop. Outstanding, kudos to the entire staff. Well done, very informative and interactive. We got a lot accomplished, and it was a great day for all of Marietta. And I also attended the special meeting regarding appointment for our city manager. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, MPT Warren. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you. I just attended the meeting for the manager appointment and also the priority setting meeting. I will concur with my colleagues here, it was a very productive meeting, ran very well, and we got a lot of stuff done, so that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. I have nothing to report at this time. Moving on to public comments. Any person may address a governing bodies at any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action will be considered or taken by the governing bodies or any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Request for more time must be made to the city clerk with a time limit to a maximum of six minutes. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Rodney Rodan.
Fine. Good. I got in touch with each one of you guys. I don't want to waste no time, so I'm going straight at it. Now, I've sent you guys a letter, I've contacted the Department of Justice and the FBI, and asked for investigation on your entire city. I gave you guys, since about four years, this lady was pestering me. She lives behind me. She's got a camera in her upstairs deck. She placed a false restraining order on me, and she don't even know me. Your police officer, she implicated on her fake restraining order, she implicated the whole police department. She's saying that the police department gave her permission to videotape me. I don't know what's wrong with this lady. I've been here, I've asked for you guys' help. You guys refuse to get into what is city business. And you could very well use the California State Privacy Act. You have an attorney here. You could have told her, stop visualing my property. There is no HOA. I don't know if she's connected to somebody here, Vicky Troutman. Matter of fact, she implemented you guys in court on her testimony. So I told the Department of Justice and the FBI to find out from you guys, because I wanted to find out which one of you guys gave permission. You, chief, who gave her permission to surveillance my house? And if there was a surveillance given, it should have been signed off by a judge. And when I got in touch with you, Ms. Mayor, you're telling me this is a private matter, and you know it's not because it affects my lifestyle living. She wants to be a dictator. She wants me to water my grass when it's available for her to get up, and you guys knew this the whole time and did absolutely nothing about it. You have an attorney here. You could have, hey, if we check the law, there's peeping tom laws. I mean, there's California Privacy Act. I'm not even an attorney, I just love to read the law. And I don't understand how you got, second time in Marietta, I've been here 31 years. The first time it happened, and it involved the school. They was acting like little race baits at the school. And ironically, the same woman who's running for president right now, she came here and helped me out, Kamala Harris. So I wrote Kamala again, said Marietta is up to the same thing. And Mayor, I'm really surprised that you, you're telling me on a private letter that you don't have nothing to do with it, when they implicated your officers in the courthouse on the transcript saying that they gave her permission? Shh, can I have a little time more?
I'm sorry, sir, you're only allowed three minutes. But thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, well, you said ask for it. You're up to six minutes, but I understand you got to shut this down.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, God bless you, too.
God bless you.
I hope you, you know, you're responsible for the city.
Thank you.
So don't send me all that away, you're not responsible, because you are.
Madam City Clerk.
Dr. Stephen James.
You guys are doing a good job. The city is doing a screwed up job.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dr. Stephen James, longtime resident of Marietta. On July 25th, my wife and I lived a nightmare that no parent should ever have to, not knowing the whereabouts of our child. Our child had been taken by the Marietta Police Department for 5150. Later that morning, we received a text message from him, so it bothered me for about 24 hours in trying to figure out how was he contacting me. I contacted ETS, where we were told by the police department where he was headed and where he's been taken, and they told me they'd never heard of him. When I contacted the not emergency number of the Marietta Police Department, they told me he'd been diverted to Inland Valley Hospital. When I contacted them, they told me that they had never heard of him and had never treated him. When I contacted the emergency number for the police department again, I was simply told that sometimes, well, they just walk away. Okay? They just simply walk away. That is unacceptable. When the police takes someone into custody or detained for 5150, they have a lot of responsibility, especially when they're saying it's a danger to himself. Had several conversations with the sergeant during that time period, and at no time was I ever told that he had been diverted. I contacted my area city council person's office via phone, spoke to her assistant, Mayor Pro Tem Warren, and I was told to contact the police. I'd already had, I had a meeting with the police. It was not, it was unacceptable. They made excuses on why their policies are written the way they are and why they did what they did. Again, no one could tell me. My wife and I had to find out ourselves where our son had been taken. The police had no idea. When I called the office of Mayor Pro Tem Warren back again, I was told that she would be told why I was calling, and she would then, again, decide she was going to take my call or my meeting. I never heard from the office. I am a United States Army veteran. I'm a medically retired San Diego City Police Officer, 30 years in education as a principal, special education director, and I cannot get a meeting with my local city council people? Local people? I tried to do this as I was directed. I live in that area. Why was I not contacted? I'm angry, as you can see. I can't believe that this happened. I feel sorry for those people that don't know what they should be doing or afraid to come here. And Madam Ray, Mayor Pro Tem, come 2026, I'll be seeking someone else to be sitting in your chair. Is there anyone on this council that'd be willing to speak to me at some point about the mental health issues and the changes that need to be done in our city? Again, thank you, and I hope your husband gets well soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order. City manager, city attorney, may I answer his question? May I answer his question, please?
Um, yes.
Thank you, sir. I did not know anything about this. I never received a phone call. I do not know and did not know about this. I would have called you back, sir. That is the God's truth. So I will get with you tomorrow, and we will chat. Thank you.
Thank you, MPT Warren. Madam City Clerk.
Ruthie James.
I hope your husband's okay.
Thank you, he is. Thank you.
And a shout out to the fine fire department and most of the time Marietta Police Department. In fact, just weeks ago, my next-door neighbor's little 11-year-old had a.
Mrs. James, can you just move the microphone a little closer? Thank you so much.
Just three weeks ago, EMT came, Marietta Fire Rescue, came to my next-door neighbor, 11-year-old had a brain surgery and is in the midst of a seizure. And they, I was over there right away. They were phenomenal. You guys were phenomenal. They saved her and the mom. But on another note, back to my son. My daughter, also, my husband, we've been married for almost 41 years. Our daughter has had cancer twice, bone marrow transplant, and six joint replacements. Our life hasn't always been easy as parents, but we've always managed to pull together. When our son was taken or detained, and then we found out he wasn't where he was supposed to be, and that we entrusted Marietta's finest six police cars on our street that morning, and we found out he's not where he was, that was the worst five hours of my life. My sister, at 39, committed suicide. To say that that was the worst moments of my life is not an understatement and not to be said lightly. When my daughter was sick, I always said I was grateful there was a plan, a treatment, there's hope. There was, I knew where she was. I had a friend say, slap me, literally slap me, because I said it could be worse. And she said, well, how much worse can get? And I said, well, let's not go there, but I know where she is, I can touch her, I can hold her, she's breathing. I didn't know where my son was. He was, he is 31. We're working on a plan to get him help. But let me tell you, that was the longest five hours, and it wasn't necessary because sergeant, well, I'm not going to name names, but a sergeant that was on the street that day called me personally twice that day and spoke to me and never mentioned that my son was rerouted, detained at the police department parking lot for maybe two hours. And shirtless, shoeless, they wouldn't let me give him a shirt. So, yeah, we need to talk about this because I am, been a very proud resident, living here in the Gem of the Valley, and not since July 24th. It's been really difficult, and like I said, it's, I've been through a lot, and you're not going to break me. This needs to be addressed, so thank you for your time.
Community Director Brian Ambrose, do you mind taking Mr. and Mrs. James into the foyer and at least have a discussion as an, as an additional layer of communication about Car Solis, please? Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk.
Alex Kowalski.
I'm excited to share with you the tremendous success of the past Family Fun Fest this June and our ambitions and plans for the future. This past event was more than just a celebration, it was a pivotal community gathering that brought together over 15,000 attendees in the heart of Temecula Valley. The highlights, the highlights included participation of notable city leaders such as Mayor Stone and Councilmember Lavelle, who graciously joined us in the dunk tank. In fact, Mayor Stone held the record of dunks until Sunday night. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it was great to have. Their involvement and contributions with other city officials throughout the valley helped raise over $3,000 for scholarships through our nonprofit Temecula Valley Community Events. These funds are dedicated to supporting students who choose to pursue trades instead of colleges, assisting them financially and fostering the next generation of skilled workers and entrepreneurs. The festival provided family-friendly and affordable entertainment that was warmly received by the community. This reception has fueled our motivation to expand. In 2025, we aim to transform what was a large gathering into an even grander affair, extending the festivities over two weekends. We've secured the website and currently in development of co-branding it as the Family Fun Fest Riverside County Fair to truly make this inclusive for everyone in the region. We are partnering with nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity and Milvet, just to name a few, not to just increase the festival's scope, but also to directly benefit these organizations. Every ticket sold by our nonprofit partners contributes directly back to their causes with $5 from each $10 ticket supporting their invaluable work. Next year's enhancements will include an upgraded carnival company and more live entertainment throughout the seven nights. We're also excited to introduce a new kids' zone, incredibly expansive area, ensuring that children of all ages have unforgettable experiences. Additionally, our Read and Win program will continue to encourage educational engagement by rewarding students K through 12 with free carnival entry for achieving their reading goals. As we look to 2025, we hope to see the city of Marietta join like Elsinore, Wildemar, and Temecula in supporting this event. We believe that your involvement, especially through parks and recreation, the local school district, and through other community leaders, could be instrumental in making the fair a landmark event for 2025 and beyond, right here in Southwest Riverside County. Thank you for considering this opportunity to deepen our community ties and create an event that celebrates and supports the vibrant tapestry of our community. I look forward to any discussions that may help facilitate this partnership and ensure the successes of future affairs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the consent calendar, approval of items 1 through 29. The items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Before we move forward, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to note a few administrative errors that occurred on the consent calendar, and this is for item 16, 17, and 25. It is administrative. For item 16 and 17, the visibility of the red lines was affected during my processing, so this has now been resolved, and I have provided the council with the red line as well as the public. And I have some up here if you would like. In addition to that, item 25, it read amendment number two, but it should have read amendment number one. And again, that was an issue that I did not resolve during the processing, and I do apologize, Madam Mayor and council, for any inconvenience.
There is no inconvenience, Madam City Clerk, but thank you so much. Are there any requests from the city council to poll any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting? MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I am not requesting to poll an item for discussion, but I would like to make a comment. It is item number 14. It is the First Amendment to the Agreement with Western Riverside Council of Governments for Regional Food Recovery and Local Assistance Program. I want it noted for the public to understand that there are no, pardon me, there is no impact to the general fund as the participation costs have been paid for through state grant funds. I think that was important to note. Thank you so much.
Thank you, MPT Warren. Any other polled items? Yes, Councilmember DeForest.
Yes, item number 11. I would just like some clarity and some transparency with the public, the publications and marketing agreement.
Fantastic. Anybody else? Nope. And I'd like to poll item number 25, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to confirm, so we're actually polling for discussion, item number 11 and 25?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
And let's go ahead. We need a motion and a second. We have a motion by Councilmember Holliday. We need a second. Second by Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
That was my bad, I'm sorry. There we go. You all can see everything I do, don't you? And Councilmember DeForest.
Good evening, Isaac.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, can we finish the vote on the consent calendar? There we go.
Okay. Thank you.
And before we go on to consent, Madam Mayor, I have to procedurally read some things. Is that all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0 with the introduction of ordinance number 606-24, an ordinance of the city council, amending Title IX of the Marietta Municipal Code to establish a new chapter. Set forth regulations defining and prohibiting the unlawful possession of detached catalytic converters. Also, ordinance number 608-24, amending sections 1.04.010, 1.32.050, 820020, 820090, 820100, and 820130 of the code to define responsible party, clarifying nuisance abatement options for the city, update provisions relating to the cost of the abatement, including attorneys' fees and costs, and establish lien and specialist. and establish lien and special assessment procedures for the recovery of nuisance abatement costs. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, Isaac and Councilmember DeForest proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'll just give you a quick rundown of what the report is for the public. Before you tonight, for your consideration, is the First Amendment to an agreement with ACP Publications to extend an agreement for over a period of two years for an amount not to exceed of $285,000. The city uses ACP Publications for the publication of the Marietta Magazine, which is a citywide magazine that goes out to all residents and businesses in the community, which outlines the city as an overall informational packet. It is published three times per year. The original agreement entered into was for the amount of $74,500, but did not include postage. This amendment includes the original amount plus the cost for two years. Fiscal year 2425 has already been budgeted in this budget cycle, but in future, amount would be budgeted in the amendment to the biannual budget. Staff's recommendation is for the approval of the amendment and to allow for the city manager to execute that amendment. And for that, I have a bill for any questions that you might have.
Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. So just to clarify and for edification and clarity, the Marietta Magazine actually was our rec guide that was published anyway. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Yes, it was. It was the recreational guide. It was since updated to include other services. So there are other things other than just the recreational components. It includes solid waste. I think the last issue had the library expansion. It's really been expanded to provide other information to the community other than just the recreational guide.
Okay, thank you. And I was just looking at this amount of, you know, $285,000, but it's not utilizing all of that for the Marietta Magazine or for the rec guide. It's utilizing a portion of that. Well, any other, is any other, is any other printing being utilized from this as well?
Yes, there is some additional printing between the two magazines. There's a little bit kind of like a flyer that goes out. It includes the publication of that for the community as an in-between between both the publications.
All right. Any printing for a police fire, anything like that as well, coming from this fund?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I'll just jump in since our, the person who wrote our agenda report's on vacation. Thank you, Isaac, for stepping in. That not to exceed amount does not mean that we will spend that amount. It's just occasionally we'll have something come up. For example, you know, fire safety, something to do with the police department, the library expansion, and we want to do some kind of printing supplement or one-page mailer or something like that. This would enable us to do that without having to come back to the council every single time. So we don't anticipate using that full amount, but it is a large number.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, and thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm ready to proceed with that if all questions are asked. And thank you so much for the clarity on that and transparency for everyone watching and everyone here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to note that I do have a public comment speaker for item number 26. He would like to speak since it was on consent.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that. Mr. Darrell Terrell.
Good evening, Audible Mayor and Audible City Council. My name is Darrell Terrell. I'm from Reno, I'm a Reno Valley resident. I want to thank you for your consideration of the catalytic converter ordinance. Your city is one of the safest cities in America for a reason. It's because of your leadership, Madam Mayor, and your colleagues, and that of you, Chief Conrad, and the men and women who wear the uniform. They put on their lives every day and to keep your community safe and holding people accountable for breaking the law. Riverside Police Chief Gonzalez has once said that there was a time when theft was met with consequences. Instead, we got a criminal justice system that has become, as Sheriff Bianco said, it will become a system with no accountability that incentivizes theft. That's what the current state catalytic converter law does. It allows a person to steal up to eight catalytic converters and without a dismantler permit, that's not a crime. That's why I have another name for this, the state law, Eight You Skated. And that's what it is for real, though. But, you know, the lawmakers in Sacramento, that's what they intended to. They did not intend for this law to be a crime. But what they intended for it to do is what it did is expanded the definition of automotive dismantlers so that if someone was found to be in possession of nine or more dismantlers without dismantler permit, they would be charged with a license violation, not a crime. No jail time and a slap on the wrist. And that's as the state law has created a licensure and a penalty scheme only for those deemed automotive dismantlers. That's what this thing is all about. It's because the fact Sacramento and these politicians up there, they have made laws that have really made our community less safe. And what this ordinance does is it represents, reflects what this community is about, keeping your families safe. And I take out my hat to Chief Conrad. He was a partner in this. It took a long time. I've been going across the county. We have 26 out of 28 cities that signed on to this one and done ordinance. You guys are number 27. I got one more to go, and that's the city of Riverside. And we will have the toughest law in the state of California, all cities under one, that's telling these people in Sacramento that we know how to hold the people accountable. And no thief could lay his head down in Riverside County anymore without being held accountable. So I want to thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council and Chief Conrad for what you guys have done. And let's go off to Riverside now. Thank you.
Mr. Terrell, I want to share something with you that I did share with our chief and our city manager. AAA has a program that is free where they partner with local departments and cities. I did reach out to AAA, but unfortunately I haven't received a return phone call. So for free, they will etch in to a catalytic converter a registered number. So there you go, sir. Here's a, here's a new task for you to partner with police departments in AAA.
Well, yeah, that's, that's one of the things I've tried to, in my own city, they made it too complicated. It's not that complicated. You could go to a mechanic and say, hey, let's, let's work together because they have incentive to have the more foot traffic. And you provide the services to the residents because one catalytic converter theft will cause chaos in someone's life who depend on their car.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I like your suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I apologize for that, Madam Mayor.
That's okay, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, so if we can now just proceed with the vote on item 11 that Mr. Bravo just presented on?
Yes.
And there is a motion, I see, on your guys' screen?
Yes, there's a motion by Councilmember Holliday, a second by MPT Warren, and please vote.
Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Thank you.
And now to your polled item, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Chief. I hope you had a really good vacation, sir.
I did.
Perfect.
So good evening, Mayor, Council, Tony Connor, your police chief. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak about our license plate reader program. I know some questions have come to you from the public, so hopefully what I'm going to present to you now will clear up those questions. And then if you have any questions at the end, please, please ask me those. So background on Marietta PD's license plate reader program. We started this in January of 2022. We use the Flock license plate reader. There's multiple vendors that offer LPRs throughout the country. Our county, every chief in this county and the sheriff have chosen Flock. So currently, the city of Marietta has 40 Flock license plate readers throughout the city. I believe on my last count, we probably have over 3,000 within the county, and they're all stitched together. So all the chiefs and the sheriff share information within the county. It's, it's, it comes to my attention, or people ask me all the time, what does the camera capture? And that's probably some of the most, the misinformation that's out there. The camera itself only captures the license plate. It can capture at times a make, model, color of the vehicle, sometimes some unique characteristics. It never catches the driver, doesn't capture a picture of the driver or any of the passengers. Matter of fact, my officers and detectives don't know who's driving the vehicle. It simply focuses down on the plate, and at times we can see parts of the car and we can make out a make, model, and a color. That's it. It doesn't pick up people's faces. It's an investigative lead. It's a place to start for detectives. It is not probable cause. We don't get search warrants on a license plate reader, read, or a hit. It's just a place for detectives to start or officers to start. I've talked to you guys about this before, but 99% of all of our crimes, a vehicle is involved. So getting that license plate is an extremely important lead in the beginning. The agenda report before you tonight has a little bit of background. We went to a one-year contract when we started with Flock. We then got approval from you for a five-year contract. And tonight, what we have before you is we're adding a little bit of technology that Flock has offered to us for $15,000 a year. So we need some approval from you to add that technology. This technology has actually solved some very recent crimes, chaperal coin. This technology came into play. We had a recent bank robbery. Three bank robberies occurred in Temecula, Marietta, where we caught the suspect. That was probably two months ago. This technology played a part in that. The technology itself, the first portion of it is called Convoy. Basically, Flock within the system can put two vehicles together at any given time. So when two vehicles pop up in Marietta and they also pop up together in Indio, that's a lead. That's very important to know that information. So the Flock system does that for us. It also, the system now will allow our victims and witnesses to send us an image of a vehicle. They may not, that person may not get the plate of the vehicle. They may get a unique characteristic. Bottom line is, we can take that image and put it in the system and possibly identify a vehicle with that, what the victim and witness gave us. And then finally, it geo, it basically links vehicles at multiple crime scenes. That was very, that's really what solved the chaperal case, which just recently came out with DOJ. We had another case in the desert that had the same vehicle that we had here in Marietta, and the Flock system links those for us. Really, really high-end technology. So that's what's before you tonight on the agenda report. Transparency. So I've talked to all of you about transparency at the police department, how important it is to me. The license plate reader program, anything the public would want to know about Marietta PD's LPR program is on our webpage. I have the policy on there, the link to the Flock portal, everybody that we share data with, how many agencies we share data with, all of our hits, all of our reads, all the numbers, who's responsible for the program, the Flock policy itself, including retention, which is 30 days. We can retain plates up to 90, but I've chosen to retain at 30. So at day 31, all the data falls off and is deleted. SB 34, which was passed by our legislature and our governor in 2015, this is our governor's attempt to keep the state of California from sharing information with one, out-of-state agencies, and two, federal agencies. It's actually a mandate that says we cannot share license plate reader data with any federal agency or any law enforcement agency outside of our state. There's some debate whether this is a legal ruling, but nevertheless, it doesn't matter to us because if we did share out of state, it slows the system down so much that we can't use the system. So currently, we only share in-state, and we're fine with that. We're really trying to solve crime here locally and in Riverside County. Do we share Flock LPR data with the Federal Bureau of Investigation? The answer to that is no, we do not. And per my staff's research today, we actually don't think the FBI has a Flock account. Our, our agency rep says they do not. And I don't think there's any agency in Riverside County that shares LPR data with the FBI or any other federal agency. Who do we share with? I've mentioned that we share with California agencies. It's on our website. Currently, we share with 262 California agencies. And the data is retained for 30 days. I mentioned that to you. So I guess last but not least, but why does our agency use Flock? You know our mission, right? We're, we're trying to solve crime, make arrests, bring justice to victims. The Flock system's super important for not only solving crime, but we also locate people with the Flock system. So it's, in my opinion, in the last decade, it's probably the most important technology in law enforcement. It's really went viral, especially in Southern California. Most agencies in Southern California are using the Flock license plate reader system, and we're solving tons of crime with it. So it's a very, it's a very valuable tool for us. So hopefully, I presented enough where you understand the system and how it works, how many cameras that we have. And I'll be grateful if you pass the, the additional technology tonight. I'm looking for a yes vote on that, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. To my fellow colleagues, the reason why I had Chief Conrad come speak is because I was at an event this weekend, this past weekend, where there were statements and allegations that we take personal information from vehicles and we share it with the FBI. And ironically, this happened to be on our consent calendar. So Chief, I'm just going to reiterate in layman terms what you have said here today. So I wanted to say thank you so much. With regards to the Flock camera, basically, it reads the license plate. You share that information with neighboring law enforcement, which is a great tool, especially if somebody's coming from Los Angeles and they're coming down the 15 freeway. Los Angeles is able to communicate with you. We know that that criminal, alleged criminal is in our city, and you are able to apprehend that alleged criminal. The information is not shared with the FBI whatsoever. We don't collect personal information from those license plate. Did I pretty much sum it up in layman terms, sir?
You did. I think it's important for the public to know. I could park an officer on Jefferson at Calmia and write down plates all day long. And there's no expectation of privacy. The system just does that for us. And it's, it's an investigative lead. It's just the very beginning. It doesn't even place anybody in the car. We have a lot of follow-up to do from there, but it puts a vehicle at a place and a time and a date. That's all it gives us.
And since we've had this program in effect, can you just share approximately how many criminals, alleged criminals have been apprehended because of this or any sort of criminal activity? I was told that there was actually a, I'm not sure if this is true, a gang member was apprehended in, in our community based on the Flock camera?
I mean, specifics as far as cases, I can just give you a really educated guess, going back to January 22. I mean, I would feel very comfortable saying we've had well over probably 1,000 cases where Flock came into play and multiple arrests, probably hundreds of arrests. And it's really important that, that we're stitched together in Riverside County because the crime, chaperal coin, is just such an excellent example. That went up to Anaheim. It involved the desert, obviously involved our city. The Flock license plate reader and the technology was, that, that crime does not get solved without Flock. So hundreds, if not probably over 1,000 cases, we've investigated using Flock.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you so much, Chief.
You're welcome.
And it looks like we have a motion from Councilmember DeForest and a second by MPT Warren. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to public hearings. Item number 30, it's a continued hearing, appeal of planning commission decision adopting a mitigated negative declaration for development plan permit, DP/2022-2605/2023-6, excuse me, 0006, Marietta Hot Springs at Jefferson Apartments. And I see, hello, Jarrett. You may proceed, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As you recall, city attorney and staff were authorized to work on a settlement agreement with the applicant. And as of late this afternoon, we have gotten the signatures on that settlement agreement. We believe that this resolves the outstanding appeal, and we will not need to ask for a continuance this evening. Our applicant is in the audience, and we're available for any questions that you might have.
Great. Any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank the applicant and staff for working diligently to get this resolved and to, and to wrap it up so that we don't have to go any further on the appeal. Thank you very much.
Councilmember DeForest.
I would also like to thank staff for diligently working with the applicant and the applicant coming to the table and doing a great job to make this- the applicant coming to the table and doing a great job to make this a better community for Marietta. Thank you all to you that are involved, and we are so excited and welcoming you to the city. And thank you, guys, and thank you, staff. I know many hours were put into this, and I appreciate everything from both, everyone getting along and getting this to fruition. So thank you all.
Madam City Clerk, I'm going to look for guidance from you. We are not going to open this up for a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Action is needed.
And City Clerk, are there any, and we're not going to do public testimony regarding the applicant as well? And we're looking for a motion in a second?
No action is needed.
We're just moving forward. Okay, we're done. So thank you, Jarrett.
Thank you, Council, and thank you, City Attorney.
Thank you. I'm moving on. Okay, moving on to item 31, public hearing, the shops at the triangle, specific plan amendment 2023-00003, tentative track map 38622, TTM-2022-2706, development plan 2022-2705. Nope, I think I'm, I'm, I got a little note here. Hold on here. Okay, okay. And, and this is a consideration of an amendment to previously adopt a subsequent environmental impact report. Staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Just a, a quick intro for me, this has been 33 years in the making. And so without further ado, Mr. Watts is going to present the staff presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Dennis Watts with the Planning Division. And with that, I'll go ahead and start. So, so the project before you tonight is named the Shops at the Triangle, which is a 64-acre development located between Interstate 15 and Interstate 215, south of Maryda Hot Springs Road. And it consists of an addendum to the 2013 subsequent environmental impact report, also includes a specific plan amendment, which is the second amendment, a development plan to construct a 279,000-square-foot retail center, and then also a tentative map to subdivide to 23 parcels. Like to note that this development represents the first development within the specific plan, so it's a key milestone for the city and for this project. Starting off with a little bit of a background to give you context, the specific plan 276 or Maryda Springs Mall was originally approved by the county in 1990 for 1.76 million square feet as an indoor retail center. An environmental impact report was prepared, which identified impacts and mitigation measures to reduce, reduce those impacts. In 2013, the city processed and approved the first amendment to the specific plan and changed the name to the Triangle. The allowed square footage remained the same, but the development was a shift to an outdoor mall concept. An updated environmental impact report, or subsequent EIR, was performed and adopted along with the specific plan amendment. The 2013 subsequent environmental impact report identified two areas or categories where there were significant impacts that could not be mitigated. There were traffic and air quality. The traffic impacts were generally related to direct and cumulative traffic impacts, and the air quality impacts were related to consistency with this region's air quality management plan and construction and cumulative impacts. Should be noted that the traffic-related impacts were found to be significant and unavoidable for one or more of the following reasons. The reasons would be as the mitigation is infeasible, the mitigation involves a fair share payment, and it would not be guaranteed implementation of the improvement. And then third is the intersection under the jurisdiction of another agency, such as Caltrans or City of Temecula. Therefore, a statement of overriding considerations was adopted by the City Council. The statement of, or the statement of overriding considerations states that the decision-making body has balanced the benefits of the proposed project against its unavoidable significant impacts. And those environmental impacts have been determined that the benefits of the project outweigh those impacts. And therefore, those effects are considered acceptable. So moving on to the specific plan amendment itself, the next few slides will focus on that. So the second amendment proposes several changes, which can be grouped into three overall areas. And those are modifications to uses in the table 2-1, modifications to the development standards, and then also modifications to the administrative matters. So some of the proposed changes to the uses allowed within the specific plan is identified in table 2-1. This slide highlights a few of the notable changes. So for new uses, one is being added as a restaurant with drive-through, adding a hospital as a conditional use permit, auto retail, or auto rentals as an office-only, a golf driving range, and an extended care facility that's less than 30 days. There's also some uses where the approval authority was modified, and that is a warehouse retail where it was a conditional use permit. It's being changed to a minor conditional use permit. Outdoor commercial recreation, same thing. And then a veterinary clinic was, previously was required as part of a retail business, and now this has been shifted to be a, allowed as a business by itself, but it would require a conditional or a minor conditional use permit. As far as development standards, highlighting a couple, one of them is there's a reduction in the 60-foot landscape setback along Maryda Hot Springs Road. This setback is now going to be more consistent with other development in the city. So that is a 25-foot landscape setback for buildings and a 15-foot landscape setback for parking areas. Another request is to modify the setback tables in various landscape setbacks within the specific plan area. And then also, moving on to administrative matters, some of the changes are to add mobile food truck standards under the temporary use permit provisions, also increase the allowances for deviations to development standards. Another one is to allow for a billboard relocation agreement. Along with that, it's to allow for electronic billboards at a ratio of 1:1, as opposed to the city's standard of two billboards to, to one. And then another requested change is to extend the development plan from two years to four years. I'd like to point out that many of these changes were made to allow for the flexibility in implementing the specific plan without having to process another specific plan amendment. We'd like to point out also that while these changes are requesting to reduce the development standards, in many cases, they're still consistent with the city's development standards. Now shifting to the development plan and tentative map, project proposes to construct about 279,500-square-foot retail center, and it's on the northerly, 36 acres of the 64-acre site. The southern portion does not have any buildings proposed at this point. So the following exhibits will focus on the northern portion only. Of the 279,000 square feet, approximately 202,000 square feet is anticipated to be retail uses, remaining about 76,000 square feet is anticipated to be restaurant or food business. The East Leboz Building along Maryda Hot Springs Road is a proposed drive-through, and this is one of the items that is dependent on the approval of this specific plan amendment. Center could be broken up into three areas. Each area is broken up by the primary entry drives. There are, each of these areas can also be accessed by walkways and well landscaped connecting areas. So the two primary entries are proposed. One is across from Sparkman Drive, and the other is across from Hancock Avenue. They will have a landscape bordering both sides of the entry drive and on each side of the walkways connecting from Maryda Hot Springs Road to the interior of the site. Project also includes paving, paving at the entries or enhanced paving at the entries, enhanced paving at the roundabouts, and along key areas along the building frontages. There's also wide walking areas in front of the buildings, and in many locations, provide pedestrian amenities such as plazas with seating areas, tables, and shade structures to create a pedestrian-oriented environment. You also have landscaping along Maryda Hot Springs Road ranging from 15 to 25 feet wide, and then also a minimum of 10 feet landscaping, and in some cases up to 20 feet along the freeway frontages. Project exceeds the parking requirements and all their specific plan requirements. This exhibit is just showing some of the elevations. The project's architectural theme is considered a modern farmhouse, which utilizes various materials such as Boran-batten paneling, staining-seen metal in various colors, wood panels, stone veneer, board-form concrete, and various textures of masonry block. So back to the environmental analysis for this, this project specifically. So the California Environmental Quality Act allows cities to rely upon or tear off of the previous environmental impact report when considering subsequent projects. So an environmental inconsistency analysis repaired and determined that an addendum is applicable in accordance with sequel guidelines. Oh, excuse me. So this evaluation concluded that the project is consistent with the 2013 subsequent environmental impact report. The proposed development plan, which represents approximately 279,000 square feet, falls well below the 1.7 million square feet approved for the specific plan, and is determined to be consistent with what was analyzed under Phase 1 of the 2013 subsequent EIR. Mitigation measures in the mitigation monitoring reporting program are still applicable and required. City had to conduct a tribal consultation. With that, there were two tribes that the city were in consultation with. That was the Pechanga Band, Luusenu Indians, and the Rincon Band. With that, formal consultation went specifically with Pechanga. And with that, there were some amended mitigation measures in the cultural and tribal cultural resource section, and those are included in the mitigation monitoring reporting program. For the traffic, in 2013, the subsequent EIR analyzed for a Phase 1, and you could see the highlighted area. It was about 500,000 square feet, and ultimately, there were about 22,500 daily trips that were anticipated for that phase. Here, using the proposed project, which is the bottom row, which is for your consideration tonight, you could see that there were about 19,200, 19,200 daily trips. So in essence, your daily, your AM, your PM, and your daily trips are lower on this project than what was anticipated in the 2013 EIR. There was also a focused traffic analysis that was prepared in 2023 and focused on traffic along Maryda Hot Springs Road between the two freeways. Ultimately, it concluded that the traffic, with the recommended improvements, that the traffic would operate at acceptable level of service, with the exception of the middle traffic driveway, and that's an unsignalized driveway. So talking about the project, project traffic improvements listed here, so essentially, they'll be required to install a signal at Maryda Hot Springs Road at Sparkman Drive. They'll also be required to modify the signal at Maryda Hot Springs Road at Hancock Avenue. They'll install deceleration lanes at the three entrances, the, at Sparkman, also at Hancock, and the middle driveway entrance that they have. They'll be required to pay development impact fees, your transportation uniform mitigation fee, and also a fair share fee. As part of the mitigation monitoring reporting program, they're also required to do improvements at Hancock Avenue and Park Crest. And then one other is to install a bus stop, shelter, and a bench. So this project went before the Planning Commission on July 24. There were no public comments during that, at the public hearing or beforehand. The commission heard the project, and then ultimately, they were discussing about the opportunity to provide for an office space for use for the police department. Ultimately, they added that into the recommendation for City Council to consider this item as far as adding a police space for the police department, and this is added in as condition of approval number 42 for your consideration. If it's not a direction that you choose to go, then staff would recommend that you either delete the condition or modify it. In conclusion, project is consistent with and achieves several general plan goals, policies, and objectives. It achieves several general plan or specific plan goals, policies, and objectives. The appropriate findings are made in the resolution and ordinance, and the project is required to construct several traffic improvements and also provide sewer infrastructure which benefits the city. Before I get to the recommendation, I want to note that you have received two letters during the public comment period. One is from the Southern California Gas Company, and then another is from Eastern Municipal Water District. Both of those letters are informational in a sense, they do not affect the, the project's decision or any aspects of the conditions or environmental. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council consider and approve the addendum to the subsequent EIR, adopt a resolution approving the addendum, the development plan, and the tentative map, subject to the conditions, and then also introduce the ordinance amending the specific plan, subject to the conditions or the attached conditions. So this concludes my staff report and available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Holliday, I see you're in the queue here, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dennis and David and all of staff, Dennis probably one of the longest-term staff members here that remembers the iterations of this project going back 20-plus years. I don't know, when did you start with the city? Had to be in the early 90s.
2001.
2001? Oh, so I predate you. But yeah, you've seen many of these iterations. I, I'm just thankful to the applicant and staff for tenacity and perseverance. It's been a long time coming. A lot of residents say, what's going on with that? And I tell them, and the attitude is, yeah, I believe it when I see it. So hopefully, we can see some dirt moving this year so they can, so I can see, yeah, see, it is happening. I do have a couple of questions. And I'm going to ask Dennis for his long-term memory. Do you remember council doing something about fast food restaurants on Hot Springs?
Are you talking the specific plan area?
No, I'm talking about all of Hot Springs. Didn't they, didn't they have, put a moratorium on drive-throughs or something back in the day?
There was. It was the retail corridor plan, which prohibited drive-throughs between the, I think, believed the, between the two freeways, and it may have extended to the east, to the east side as well.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Is that, is that gone now?
The, the retail corridor plan has been rescinded.
Okay.
So it is gone, yes.
So there are no restrictions on fast food restaurants anywhere in that area?
Correct.
And under this amendment, how many fast food restaurants are allowed?
It, it doesn't have a specific number, but what the, it, it kind of lays out an area. So between the, between the two primary entrances, it would not allow them in the first 200 feet into the project site. But if you go further south into the project site, then it would allow them. And then when you go outside of the two primary entries, so east or west of the Sparkman Drive, it would be allowed anywhere within that. And then if you went east of the Hancock Avenue Drive, primary drive, it would be allowed in anywhere within that area.
200 feet east or west?
200 feet south.
Only south. What's the distance east or west?
There would be none.
So it could be on, it, it has to be 200 feet south of the intersection. Yeah, if you want to go back to that.
So it's kind of hard to read, but Building 14, which is on the very top right.
The top right corner.
Right, that is a drive-through. So that's right up on Maryda Hot Springs Road.
But it couldn't be in 13, and it couldn't be in 12.
It could be in, is 13 right? So it could be in 13, but it couldn't be between the two primary drives in the first, in the first row, I guess.
Okay, so that 200 feet is just between the two drives.
200 feet between the drives and south, so.
Gotcha. So it can't be in, in 7, 8, 11, or 12.
Correct. But if they came in and changed the site plan, it could be 200 feet south of that.
Oh, if they move the buildings further south.
Sure.
Yeah, my only concern would be, as the previous council was, is having a string of drive-throughs right on Hot Springs Road. of drive-throughs right on Hot Springs Road. So under the current condition, it can't be in those four, but it could be in the other six.
That is correct.
And, but currently, we only have one plant. Do we have the opportunity today to limit the number?
If council so chooses.
Okay. And then my second question is for the chief. Is Chief Conrad here, or maybe Captain Henry, to talk about the police office?
Perfect timing. I get them both.
There's perfect timing. We're just calling your name. I will say Captain Henry was on his feet quickly to step in for you.
That was his first test.
I just wanted to ask about the police office condition. Your thoughts?
In the triangle, having a storefront?
Okay, yes.
Yeah, no, I would, I would very much like that. I've worked closely with Mr. Chong Trang Su, and, and I know that we have a verbal commitment that that will be placed in there. I think that's important. It is close to our station, but with beat integrity and the way traffic is moving through the city, we want to have as many storefronts as possible.
Well, it's more than just a verbal agreement. It's now a condition.
Great.
So staff's comments was, it was up to council to either keep it, reject it, or modify it. So obviously, we wanted to get your input of which of those you wanted to happen.
Yeah, I would very much like it. There's a, we've had some discussions on the difference between a storefront versus a substation versus something that's manned. It's important to know that we don't have the staffing to actually man this. This is not a place for the public to go and get service. Of course, if a member of the public is there asking for service and an officer is present, they will provide that service. I'd like to see parking of police cars out front so that they're very visible in the triangle, and this will be a place for officers to write reports, take breaks, meet. If it's a location that we can have a meeting room, some computers, some phones, it'd be nice to have an interview room if we needed to interview a witness. We could actually have them meet at that location. But again, it's not an actual substation. It's not manned.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam City Attorney, am I allowed to ask questions of the applicant at this time?
Sure.
If one of the applicants could come up.
You can come to the podium up here, Saul.
Yes, Saul Jaffey, on behalf of the applicant.
Hi, Saul. I don't know that we formally met. Again, I appreciate your tenacity and efforts getting it to this point. I just want to get your input on the fast food uses and what you would think about limiting those on the one buildings that front Hot Springs to a, to a number, say, two across all those buildings.
We kind of have a problem with that.
Okay. How many were you thinking?
Well, let's just talk about the practical aspects of this, because I think, you know, this is getting lost, and we're creating rules for a problem that doesn't exist. So I want to explain a little bit more. So the site plan in the center retail area is fixed. What I mean by that is, we have signed leases with tenants that won't let us put drive-throughs there. So it's a problem that doesn't exist.
Okay.
In terms of the east and the west areas, we want to keep the flexibility to add, but right now, we've got tenants for all of those buildings already.
Including a drive-through?
Including a drive-through for the one drive-through.
For one?
Yeah.
Okay.
We will likely add another drive-through further back from Marietta Hot Springs Road on the far east side.
Yeah.
It's not a problem, I think, that you're trying to address because you're concerned about. But, but what you, what you need to understand is, we're probably not going to be changing the site plan from what you see in front of you, other than things like adding another pad or changing a building size of some of the major tenants. But we've got signed leases.
Good to know, good to know. You understand the concern.
I do, and.
You've got a beautiful property. Everything I've seen is going to be an outstanding, upscale, beautiful center, and you would hate to see several drive-throughs that happen to be the first thing people see as they drive up.
We can't do that.
Yeah.
Under our existing leases, we can't do that anyway.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate you coming up. That's all my questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Thank you. Saul, I do have a question. I'm glad you didn't want you to run back and have to go back up again. How do you feel about having a police presence in the triangle?
So we were the ones that originally proposed that.
Okay.
There's some discussion about what it will look like and where it will be. The background is, we actually proposed it originally. We were told no. Then we had some further discussions, and then there was a level of interest. We want to make sure it fits in the right place.
Correct.
And that it's the right size, and now hearing that it's not going to be staffed, it needs to be smaller, can't be, we can't give up a lot of space if it's not going to be used. We're happy to have a police presence. We think it's good for the project, good for the city. So we're, the way that it's written right now is, there's a condition of approval that basically says that we'll work with staff on what that presence will be.
Okay.
And we're very comfortable with that condition.
Great, thank you. I also have one question for staff. Appreciate it. The right lanes going into the three entrances on Hot Springs Road, please tell me that those are going to be dedicated lanes into the project and not like we're having the problems at Sam's Club lane.
Correct, there is a deceleration lane at each of the three entrances.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, MPT Warren. Councilmember Lavelle.
I'd just like to pay a compliment to everyone involved who mentioned this. This has been a thought and a project before the city was a city. So this is, it's nice to see the applicant here, and thank you, staff, for all your hard work on the presentation and everything that's happened.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilwoman DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to thank everyone that was involved with this project. I'd like to thank the applicant for the forward thinking of actually wanting to put in a substation or whatever it's going to look like there. I think that's very important, and I'd just like to say kudos to staff for working hard. Kudos to Mayor Stone and myself for sitting on the ad hoc committee since we were elected. This is a happy day to see this go forward, and I am thrilled. So, and, and also, kudos to our city manager for our focused traffic study to get us to move forward. So thank you. The project looks beautiful, and if it could be built next week, it would be amazing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. So Andy, Cindy, and Saul, first I want to say thank you so much for allowing me to tease the community at the state of the city. And as you know, that I moved to Marietta Hot Springs in 1976 at the age of 14, and I've seen this beautiful town grow into a vibrant city. And along the 20 years, there have been so many proposed projects at the triangle, from Zeb Buffman to possibly a lake where you could demonstrate water crafts, to finally this beautiful, beautiful project. And I'm really excited for you when it's time for you to announce what is going to come to the triangle. And what I can say is that it's, it's going to change this entire region for the types of uses that will be coming to Marietta. You've been very, very patient. We really appreciate it very, very much, and especially to our staff. A lot of our staff is new. You had to catch up on a lot of history, and there are some people that have been mentoring, and we wanted to say thank you so much for your consideration, your professionalism in guiding them through this process. And then lastly, definitely, our city manager. This was a, I would probably say, one of your major goals was to see this happen, especially before you retire, and, you know, your dedication to getting them through the process is very, very appreciated, and thank you to you. So with that, we will move on to the public hearing. So I will open up the public hearing. And Madam City Clerk, are there any public testimonies?
You're going to start with the applicant?
Lou, the applicant was going to defer.
We can defer.
I'm going to go ahead and move on to a public comment. I do have Mr. Patrick Ellis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem, council, staff, Patrick Ellis, President, CEO of the Marietta Oldhamar Chamber of Commerce. This is a very exciting night. A lot of time and energy and effort has been put into this. The project that's before you tonight is an amazing project. We stand ready and willing to help the applicant in every way, shape, and form, and just excited for this night to come to fruition. So on behalf of the Marietta Oldhamar Chamber of Commerce, we fully support this project. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that actually concludes public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
To maybe move on to deliberation, we don't need a rebuttal.
Yes. So we'll bring it back for discussion, any discussion from council? Seeing none, we will call, oh, we already have a motion from Councilmember DeForest, and a second from Councilmember Holliday, and please vote.
We are closing the public hearing, Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm closing the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously to slide zero. Madam Mayor, if I may, entitled an ordinance of the city council approving and adopting the triangle-specific plan amendment number two for property located on 64.3 acres southerly of Marietta Hot Springs Road, east of Interstate 15, and west of Interstate 215, subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to discussion item number 32, Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure, requests for a city of Marietta team, and council members, Councilmember Lavelle and I have decided to partner together. And as you know, that the Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure is a signature event for the city of Marietta. And we decided that we want a city team, and we're going to challenge all the cities in Southwest Riverside County to compete for the largest team. And Susan G. Coleman will be offering a, an award in perpetuity because we are going to continue building our city team. And this definitely includes fire, police, CSD, executive department, Loma Linda Hospital, Because I will tell you that we are a very competitive council, and we are going to take home the award. So with that said, I would like to take councilmember questions in regards with, what does that look like for the, for Team Marietta? Councilmember Holliday.
That's my question for you. What is, what are you asking us to do?
So what I'm at, so we're going to form a city of Marietta team, and you're, we're going to create a page, and you're going to go on the page, and you're going to pay to walk with us. 100% of the proceeds will go to the Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation, and we are going to walk collaboratively in honor of those that have survived. We're going to honor those that are going through treatment, and this is about camaraderie, and again, it's about taking home the gold because we're going to have the largest team. So that's it.
I will provide the pink tutus for all of us.
I was just going to ask, do we have to wear tutus?
I'll just wash my underwear.
I'll just wash my underwear with a red t-shirt.
I nominate Ron to wear my weight vest.
MPT Warren, did you have a question?
It was all about the tutu. I got my answer.
You got it. Okay, great. Okay, so I think, based on the conversation, we have consensus, which is great. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments with regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Okay, bringing it back for council discussion, is there any discussion on our city team for Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure?
Are we going to be creative with a team name or just do like?
That's what I was just going to say. We need a name.
Okay.
Team Best in the West?
It has to have Marietta in it.
Definitely has to have Marietta in it.
Well, that was, we're obviously the best, so.
Councilmember Holliday, do you have a suggestion for our team name?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, great. MPT?
We'll work on it.
Well, we will work on it. Fantastic. Okay, so there is no action required. It sounds like that we have consensus, and now it will be up to the Susan G. Coleman to draft a letter so I can challenge all the mayors in Southwest Riverside County, so. Moving on to discussion number, item 33, is our fiscal year 2024, 2025 proposed budget adjustments, and I think staff is making their way over, and you can begin when you
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, city staff members of the public, Javier Carcamo, Director of Finance. And tonight, we're going to present to you the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget adjustments. Before we move into our presentation, let me introduce you, our fantastic team that has joined us tonight, Finance Manager Jennifer Terry, and also our acting financial analyst, Tanner Benson, and which they're going to provide most of the presentation to you tonight. Thank you. So we do have a lot of information to share with you. So first is, can I set the stage for you as far as our budget? This is, we're currently in our second year of the biannual budget process, a cycle. As you recall, we brought the budget of adoption sometime ago back in November of '22. That's kind of where we started the process, and eventually, we brought you a balanced budget at that point in time in June of 2023. We're also going to briefly discuss with you the economic update or economic drivers that have changed the economy landscape during the last couple of years, and specifically what some of the budget adjustment drivers that we're looking at to implement during fiscal year 24, 25. We're going to go over and discuss the changes to the general fund, Measure T, and other significant changes we have for, for those two funds, and primarily, the primary operating funds that we have, which also includes the Fire District, CSD Fund, as well as the Library. We're going to provide to you some personnel changes and look at the revised schedule of authorized position list. We're going to go over the proposed adjustments, which are also attached to the report tonight as Attachment 1, and as well as, we're going to be sharing with you what the future financial update looks like for the next seven months. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the budget economic indicators and changes that we have experienced during the last 18 to years. One of the primary factors is inflation. Here's the chart, as you can see, is. inflation. Here is the chart. As you can see, is a 10-year history. For the most part, our inflation rate has been somewhere in the 2%. This is what the Federal Reserve target is, a 2%, which fully support the, the economy. Back in 2021, we had a significant change or inflation rate experience during that year. I would say primarily somewhat of a self-inflicted wound driven by our federal government. That led to significant increase in inflation during fiscal year, during calendar year '21, '22, but since then has slowed down. That is primarily because the Federal Reserve Bank has implemented their restrictive monetary policy, primarily with the interest rate. So what they have done in order to reduce inflation is increase the interest rate, the federal interest rate, which was at some point at 0% at the end of March of '22. Since then, we have, we have experienced an increase of 11 times rate increases, which is now at, at a 5.5% as of June of 2023. So for the last 13 months, we haven't seen a, a change in our federal interest rate. And that's primarily because they want to restrict the monetary funding within the economy. That is restricting the, the volume of cash that is within our economy. The goal is really to reverse inflation, so bring it down from the high point back in '21. And that is actually happening during the last few years. And going back to that last slide, the projected is about 3% for calendar year '24. However, the high interest rate has really impacted our economy. That is with, primarily with borrowing money. So cost of borrowing money has gone up, which has impacted high ticket, high-value purchases such as homes, cars, boats, items that will require financing. So that has really impacted sales tax nationwide. But we have also seen the impact in our, in local economy as well at the state level. So before the federal government goes, sorry, Federal Reserve Bank start considering a decrease in the federal interest rate, they have to look at the economic data. They're very economic data-driven at this point in time. So they're looking at the inflation rate, which is going in the right positive path. They're also looking at the unemployment rate, which is 4.3%, which is not terrible, it's not terribly bad. It's slightly over the unemployment rate pre-pandemic number. So it's probably a number the Federal Reserve Bank is comfortable with. But most, the, the one area they're looking at very closely is the labor market. This really tells them whether or not companies and firms are hiring. If they're hiring, that tends to show that we have good economy. If they're not hiring as much, that shows that their economy is slowing down. And the graph that we have at the bottom, based on our, the last job report we, that were provided, the July jobs was 114,000 jobs added. That has been the lowest during the last two years. So certainly, it's showing that companies are hiring less. Certainly a sign of economic slowdown. So during the next meeting that they have, which will be on September 18, I think the Chairman Powell will have a decision to make whether or not they will, it is a time to make a first decrease in interest rate, possibly a quarter point. But that will be a first indication, if he does that, that the, the interest rate will start going down moving forward. But again, it's all driven by numbers at this point. So why I shared this, well, this really has an impact on our local economy in terms to the condition, inflation numbers. What we have seen is lower than anticipated in sales tax. It's two reasons. One is the economy, and second is as part of our budget that we adopted back in June of '23, we had considered two big-box retail stores that will be open during the year, during those two years. So that has impacted our sales tax numbers. We have seen a, a decrease in our transient occupancy tax. As well, we were expecting two new hotels, or two hotels providers to be open within that cycle. We have seen a decrease in charges for services as well as property tax transfer. However, some of the lower-than-anticipated revenue that we experience in those revenue categories has been somewhat offset, not necessarily entirely, but somewhat offset with higher-than-anticipated investment earnings. And that is because, again, the interest, federal interest rate is high. And, and we have seen a really good investment earnings in our short-term investments. Inflation has really impacted our expenditures budget categories, primarily with salaries and benefits. Our proposed budget adjustment you will see later tonight does include the salary increases for all of our labor agreements for, for the current fiscal year '24, '25. We have also continued to increase in, in a cost in pension payments, primarily with cowpurs, and we'll continue to see that through fiscal year 2033, '34, based on our current forecast. Operating costs in general, we have seen increase there as well, primarily with our insurance cost. Services and contracts have also increased during the last two years. Some of these contracts have a set increase in, in COLA adjustments. Cost of purchasing and replacement equipment has gone up as well. Certainly, we have a fleet of equipment that is significant, and we have seen an increase in those areas as well. On the capital plan budget, as we have experienced increase in design services, as well as construction costs, and as well as the cost of purchase of land for some certain of those, for certain projects. And with that, I will turn it over to Jennifer. She'll go over some of the sales tax data that we have analyzed for you tonight.
Thank you, Javier. I'm going to expand on some sales tax data this evening, given that it is the city's largest revenue source. This table provide, is, was provided by our sales tax consultant, HDL, and represents a year-over-year change for the fourth quarter of calendar year 2023. So this is for the period of October through December. Marietta's sales tax decreased by 2.9%. The county as a whole decreased by 1%, and the state saw a decrease of 2.5%. So we're, we're not alone in the sales tax reductions. Everyone is feeling the, the tightening of the economy. The bottom portion of the table reflects the major sales tax categories and compares, again, the fourth quarter for '22, for '23 versus '22. Overall, we've seen a slowdown in all of our, in all of our categories, except for business and industry, which is performing slightly better than last year, and restaurants and hotels, which are comparable with last year. This image, also provided by HDL, provides insight into sales tax performance throughout the state. Orange County and Los Angeles Counties are in the same color category as Riverside County, down anywhere between a half a percent to 4%, while San Bernardino County, the large darker orange section, is down more than 4% over the calendar, yeah, over the calendar year. So there are, there are those who are doing worse than us. Sales tax receipts are monitored monthly to ensure they are coming in as projected. We also meet with our sales tax consultant, HDL, and our investment advisor, Chandler Asset Management, both of whom who provide us with expert insight into the local, regional, and national economies. Sales tax receipts are collected on a two-month delay. As of today, we've received receipts through May of 2024. On this slide, we compare the collections over a four-year period through May. The left table is for Bradley Burns, and the right table is for Measure T. The fiscal year receipts are slightly below fiscal year '22 for Bradley Burns. And for Measure T, the receipts are on par with fiscal year '22. When comparing fiscal year '22, '23, Bradley Burns is coming in 4% lower, and Measure T, 2% lower. As you can see on this slide, our sales tax at the, starting at the bottom and working our way to the top, we've had continued growth between fiscal year 1920 through '22, '23. That was our largest year in sales tax that, that we've had as of late. The... Planning for our current biannual budget began at the tail end of calendar year '22, when sales tax collections were coming in very strong. The estimated revenues for the biannual budget included factors for new retail and hospitality, which Javier had already mentioned, and that year-to-year growth that we had been seeing. As, as we did with the fiscal year '23, '24 budget, we are proposing to adjust our projections because of year-to-date actuals. We're proposing to reduce Bradley Burns by $2.1 million and Measure T by $2.3 million. These projections will, are, we're proposing that, that these projections will be slightly a 3% higher than what we're currently estimating for fiscal year '24, so our, the year-end that we just had. Because we do see indicators where the interest rates are going to drop, and that will help to spur the economy. In addition to those other, the big-box retailers are under construction and coming online, so that will also help. Combined, these reductions total approximately $4.5 million. To offset these reductions in revenue, the city manager implemented current year's spending restrictions, and has instructed departments to produce budget reductions that reduce operating budgets by up to 10%, reduce the budget for overtime by, across departments by 10%, defer the fiscal year '25 positions that were slated to come online until the, until we can afford those positions, and freezing, hiring freeze on vacant positions as they become vacant throughout the fiscal year unless they are deemed essential and approved by the city manager's office. We will also use, use of unassigned fund balance to close the gap. I'm going to turn over the presentation to Tanner to discuss the proposed revenue and expenditure changes for both the general fund and Measure T.
Thank you, Jennifer. Perfect. The budget, the proposed budget update includes three components for Measure T and the general fund, adjustments to revenues based off of updated projections, increased personnel costs related to previously approved MOUs, and department reductions approved by the city manager. The table you guys have before you is our general fund budget. The first column is the budget that was adopted at the biannual budget's approval. As you see, we had a balanced, a balanced budget with a proposed contribution to unassigned fund balance of $385,000. The next two columns are the proposed adjustments and the percentage change. The proposed adjustments for general fund revenues are, the major ones are going to be our reduction in sales tax by $2.1 million, our reduction in transient occupancy tax, or TOT, tax by $2.9 million, and a reduction in charges for services by about $507,000. Those are offset by anticipated revenue increases from other miscellaneous revenues, those of about $2.7 million. Those other miscellaneous revenues are greatly made up of our interest income and of $2.1 million, and other agency reimbursements of $500,000. This does result in a net 4% reduction in our proposed revenue budget, reducing our proposed revenue budget down to $69 million. For our proposed expenditure changes, we see a, we're proposing a $5.5 million increase to our personnel costs, the, and, which is being offset by the up-to-10% reduction across all departments of $500,013 in operations and maintenance, and a $135,000 decrease in our capital outlay budgets. The, the expenditures of general fund is still being projected to increase by 7%, leaving the proposed expenditure budget to be $76 million. This would be, leave us with a proposed use of fund balance of $7.4 million in our general fund. For our Measure T, it's a very similar table, but slightly smaller. We also had a balanced budget in our biennial adoption of the Measure T budget with a contribution to unassigned fund balance of $2.8 million. Due to the reductions, proposed reductions that Jennifer and Javier mentioned in sales tax of $2.3 million, we are looking to propose an amended budget for revenues of 29 million. And for our expenditures, we are seeing, we are proposing a smaller increase to personnel costs of $330,000, which is being offset by our, our operating reductions of $425,000 in operations and management, maintenance, and in capital outlay of $285,000. Our total expenditures are being reduced by about 1%, or are being proposed to be reduced by about 1%, still leaving the expenditure budget in $28 million. We do propose a contribution to ending fund balance, or unassigned fund balance in Measure T of $866,000. There are additional proposed changes to our budget that are on a citywide level. Everything on this slide does not include our general fund or Measure T changes. So we are proposing an increase citywide in interest income of about $567,000. But we are also seeing a proposed decrease in our gas tax revenue of $383,000, our federal and state reimbursements of about $961,000, and our charges and services, and our licenses and permits, permit fees of $107,000 citywide, as far as revenues go. And on the expenditure side, we are seeing increases, we are proposing increases of $3 million for personnel-related expenditures, and a decrease in operations and maintenance, and about, in the amount of about $2 million citywide. I will be turning it back over to Jennifer to go over the remaining citywide changes.
Thank you. Staff regularly brings the Schedule of Authorized Positions to city council to adjust for new positions and titles assigned to current positions. This proposed schedule updates, this proposed update removes 12 full-time equivalent, or FTE, positions in the '24, '25 budget, bringing the total, total FTE count of 466.59 positions. This list includes a combination of additions, position titles, and reclassification of positions necessary for optimal business needs intended to increase operational efficiency and effectiveness. The budgetary changes for these positions are included in the proposed adjustments. The budgetary changes for these positions are included in the proposed adjustments. This slide incorporates all of the proposed changes citywide. The proposed revenue reductions are $4.3 million, bringing the total revenue to $174.8 million, and the proposed expenditures is an increase of $5.5 million, bringing total expenditures to $172.9 million. Citywide, we do have a balanced budget of contributing to fund balance as... unassigned fund balance as of $1.8 million, but we manage all of the funds on an individual Attachment 1 to the agenda report has all of the changes, and attachment 2 is the summary for the five major funds, because we did not go over specifically the FIRE, CSD, and The unassigned fund balance, this slide represents the unassigned fund balance for our five major funds: general fund, Measure T, FIRE District, CSD, and Library. And just as a refresher, the unassigned fund balance is a collection of prior year's budgetary savings or the difference when revenue exceeds expenditures that have not been assigned, restricted, or committed for a specific purpose. With the proposed adjustments we discussed tonight, we project that the general fund will have a fiscal year... will end the fiscal year with approximately $5.2 million in unassigned fund balance, and Measure T will have approximately $2 million. The negative fund balances for FIRE, Community and Community Services District will be trued up as part of the future first-quarter budget update using unassigned fund balance from either general fund or Measure T. In accordance with our reserve policy, we are required to maintain at least a 25% operating reserve based on the budgeted operating expenses for that fiscal year. The amounts shown in the middle two columns were the projected amounts needed to contribute to the operating reserves to maintain the 30% we established a year and a half ago. While we are still transferring those amounts to the operating reserves, the percentages for most of the funds are now below 30%. With the contributions, general fund is... will currently be at 28% operating reserve. Measure T is slightly above at 31%. Measure T supplements the operating reserves for the FIRE District, the CSD, and the Library. So you'll see two different lines or two different rows on that slide: one that was funded from the district, and the second one is funded through Measure T. The sum of those two rows for each district does equate to a 28% operating reserve for the FIRE District, CSD, and Library. The next categories of sustainability reserves include economic contingency reserves and fleet replacement reserves. We're not proposing any contributions to any of these reserves at this time. And then the final portion of our sustainability reserves, we have facility repair reserves, pension, and OPEB funds. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefit Funds for retiree medical and continuing operations. Again, we're not proposing to contribute or withdraw from any of these funds. So that brings our total operating and sustainability reserve balances to $80.4 million. While this reserve... while these reserve amounts may seem like a lot, the city has many future needs for fleet expansion and replacements, facility enhancements, and pension and other OPEB obligations. So we need to ensure that we have funds set aside for those items in the future. Some of our future finance updates, we plan to bring the first-quarter budget update to council in November. Also in November, we're hoping to have our tentative closed books for fiscal year '24, so we'll bring you our estimated balances for that fiscal year. And then mid-year update will be in February. The primary objectives for the mid-year update this year will be to refine our revenue sources, make sure that we're coming in as projected; if not, we'll adjust plus or minus; refine or implement salary savings for those departments that have had vacancies; and update the schedule of authorized positions if necessary. Acceptance... the recommended actions tonight are to accept and file the report, amend the operating fiscal year '25 operating budget as defined within the report, and approve the updated schedule of authorized position list. And that concludes our presentation. We're available with any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jennifer, Tanner, and Javier. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I see Councilmember Holliday in the queue.
Shocking, I know. Actually, very comprehensive report. Thank you for including all those different schedules. They're very helpful. I had only one question. If you go back to the sustainability reserve slide... So in some organizations that build up reserves for facilities or fleet replacement, they do a reserve study, which is... it can be done internally to say, here's where we project the money we're going to need and what year we're going to need it, and how are we in funding that? What percentage of that funding are we at today? Has the city done that?
Okay, so I'll jump in to kind of provide you some insight. So we do have a list of all... primarily for all the fleet vehicles and equipment with the indicated or proposed cost of replacement costs... excuse me, replacement cost for each of those items. So the reserve that we have today is not necessarily based on that. We... prior to Measure T, we have very limited resources. Things were paid as we go, but since then, we have been able to establish some reserves for some of those replacements. The goal is really to get to that point where we identify what the replacement cost is and when each of those vehicles and equipment will come in to be replaced, and identifying that cost on an annual basis and establish an ongoing replacement such as like internal service charge, for instance, where we will be able to add it into the budget process on an annual basis to recover that or replace or recover that cost or replace that vehicles for future replacement.
And when do you anticipate that happening?
My goal... well, that will probably be one of the first projects that subsequently our financial analyst position is filled. Once that position is filled, actually have also another position that is vacant. So as soon as those two positions comes online, that'll probably be one of the first projects that we're working on. Our goal really is to bring something as part of the next year budget cycle.
Okay. And at that time, would make sense, when you do that, to do actually have the reserve study showing where we are today and how to get to where we need to be.
Correct.
So, sorry I didn't give you that question ahead of time.
No, it's fine.
Just popped into my head while I'm looking at the slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we are going through our... by the way, thank you for the wonderful report, transparency for everyone involved, and I appreciate your time, and you can tell why we have an award-winning finance department. So, thank you. You make budget exciting, right?
Well, I don't know about that.
I was pushing it for everyone, right? So the projected trend of sales tax, you said, is heading in the downward. Is there a leveling out anticipated 2025?
We're kind of seeing fiscal year '24 as our launching point, so we're hoping that in the very near future, sales tax receipts will increase because the... we did have a delay in big-box retailers opening, so that is going to really stimulate our sales tax revenue. And then if the feds reduce interest rates, that will help spur auto sales again, because they really have halted as of late.
All right. One more question. And you talked about a hiring freeze of essential employees, and I realize that we have a 10% reduction. That was what we've asked for, all departments. But I'm just... we have some vacancies in police and fire, and as our community is growing... I know that we have 1,000 units coming onboard, I guess I was told this month. How are we going to address that? Is that something our city manager will be able to unfreeze those positions? And I know as soon as those big-box stores come on, we'll be able to reassess things as well, but...
I will answer that for you as best as I can. We're very fortunate. Our executive team works extremely well together, and we meet regularly to discuss positions and staffing and what the needs are of police and fire as our population is increasing at a rate we didn't quite expect quite so quickly. But also, all of the other departments, you know, police and fire require HR, they require finance, they require a lot of support departments. So we can't just add public safety without looking at how we add to the other departments as well. And so it's a wonderful exercise to watch the directors work together and say, we need to have a balance of how we add staff to the city. And I've many times heard directors say, you know what? We need that position in your department more right now than I need mine, so I'm going to move mine down a year or so. And that's the type of discussions that they have. So it's very much done as a group. We have froze the new positions that we have on the books. If we needed them, again, the city's not in poor financial shape, we can add them in. We just don't want to wholesale add them in. We want to evaluate them. We'd prefer not to fill them right now if we can wait. In some cases, we might not be able to. Vacant positions, we're filling, although in some cases, I know in the city manager's office, we have two, three positions that we're holding off on filling. We may have to fill one relatively soon. But staff is looking at how, right now, while we're a little bit stalled in our sales tax revenues, how can we assist the security of the budget by maybe not filling some of these positions we need? Now, obviously, if we need them, we'll fill them. But I think the executive team and staff has done a very good job of figuring out how we can make all of this work as best we can. It doesn't mean that staffing won't continue to be a huge priority going forward, and we're looking forward to when the triangle opens, and we have new revenue sources. I truly believe that we're just in a place right now where we've kind of fallen behind the sales tax revenue trend, and we just need to pause for a little bit until we can get back caught up and ahead of it, and the economy gets a little bit stronger. So I don't know if that answered your question, but...
That certainly did. Thank you, Madam City Manager, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
I want to piggyback on Councilmember DeForest with you, Madam City Manager, with regards to vacant positions. I was sent a... an executive assistant admin service department and economic development assistant ranging from $75,000 to $92,000. And so my question to you is, is this an essential vacant position that we have to fill right now?
Yes, it is. So we have two directors who are currently without executive assistants, which our goal is to always have at least one for each director. Because of the economy and because they are giving people... we have two directors who are sharing this position. And so at some point down the road, we will... they will be two people, but for right now, we're looking to fill it with one person and hopefully make that work, so...
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions from the deists? Seeing none. Okay. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Okay, great. Bringing it back for additional discussion from our colleagues. Seeing none. We have a motion from Councilmember Holliday and a second from MPT Warren. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to notifications, notice of pending approval of final track MAP TR 38228. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Approval of final track MAP TR 38228 will be continued to a future meeting. Since this is a notification, no action is needed from this council.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to governing body announcements. The governing body announcements is an opportunity for city council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes, and the city clerk will use the computerized timer. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you would like to see my governing board announcements, they're available online. I just would like to say I participated in the Marietta Coffee with the City with Mayor Stone, and that was an amazing event. There was lots of people there that morning. Everybody was bright and cheery. Also, I attended the Marietta Temecula Group monthly meeting, which was quite amazing because speaker that day was Mike Malley. He's a managing partner with Clancy Sports. It was held at Wilson Creek Winery. I don't know if any of you know or all of you know, but the Olympics are coming to our region, so they'll be held at Galloway Downs, and it is going to be a game changer for our region, and it'll be LA 2028. All the equestrian will be held there. I think it'll be great. It'll put Marietta, Temecula, and the surrounding areas on the map. He was very informative, and I'm sure our CEO of our amazing chamber will be all over that, because there is a lot of great small business, large business, and business to be had. So hopefully, we can get four or five more hotels online, because they're going to be needed. Also, I have attended Marietta Market Nights, and that was great fun, and it's always nice to get out and about in our beautiful city. If you need to get ahold of me, I can be reached by email or by cell, and you can text me to that number as well for faster response. I thank you, Madam Mayor, and moving on to the next.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember LeBell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the MTG meeting. I forget what date that was, but with Councilmember DeForest over here. It was very exciting to see what was going to be coming to Temecula in regards to the Olympics and what that footprint will bring. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember LeBell. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I also attended that, although I left it off my list. But it's not coming to Temecula. It's actually in the county. Councilmember LeBell.
It's coming to our region.
Yes, coming to our region. You can see my governing body announcements online. Because of the break, they're rather lengthy, but a couple that I wanted to point out, obviously, I think all of us attended the National Night Out with our police department and several other agencies around the area that participated. The heat kept people away for a little bit, but I think the food brought them out in the end. And of course, the dogs. The dogs always bring people out, so great job on that. And then most recently, I attended the 20-year anniversary celebration for Rustico Restaurante and Pizzeria. 20 years, a restaurant has been doing business in the city of Marietta, and that deserves celebration, because restaurants are a tough business, and they've been doing a great job, and I wish them 20 more years. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see on my list of...
As you can see on my list of attendance, I had the pleasure of going to the networking breakfast for our wonderful chamber, and also to their monthly mixer, which was at Gosh Ford. Great mixer, lots of people were in attendance, it was really wonderful. National Night Out, always a great night, the kids love it. I think my granddaughter came home with more things than she needed, but I thank you for that because now they're all at my house. Also, the Broker Social, I attended that with our Economic Development and Chamber, that was a nice evening. With Mayor Stone, we got up at 0:00 hour in the morning, some dark time, to attend a Chamber event out in Corona called Trains, Planes, and Automobiles, who learned a little bit about the Ontario International Airport, the train bullet system that's going to be going to Vegas for Mantra Kukamanga, and some innovative ideas on some vans to help with getting people around town. So that was a very good presentation, and thank you, Mayor, for inviting me to go with you. I also had the opportunity, before break, to do a luncheon with State Controller Fiona Ma. It was hosted by the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District. I did speak to her about money that we needed for Keller Road, and I have a contact, and she said she had money, so we'll be pursuing that. So that was kind of good news. And I also attended the Rustico Restaurant Pizzeria Celebration. I've been in business 43 years, and they've been in business 20, and I just think it's amazing how great they are doing, a wonderful family organization, and I just love their food. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, MPT Warren. With regard to my governing body announcements, they are listed here, and you can review them on our website. Moving on to the next item, Councilmember requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. Now's the time for Councilmember requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. There will be no discussion on the request. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests for my colleagues to, to add a future item to agenda? Before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I wanted to adjourn the meeting in honor of tomorrow's Senior Citizens Day. This was proclaimed by President Ronald Reagan to celebrate and appreciate senior citizens for paving the way for future generations. For all they have achieved throughout life and for all they continue to accomplish, we owe, we owe older citizens our thanks and heartfelt salute. We can best demonstrate our gratitude and esteem by making sure that our communities are in good places, which mature and grow older places in which older people can participate to the fullest and can find encouragement, acceptance, assistance, and services they need to continue to lead lives of independent and dignity. Ronald Reagan. So, yes, amen, exactly. And we adjourn this meeting, so thank you, everybody.